So that's something I just sort of noticed because the right of way is not 30, it's 33 feet on that side. Based on the county maps. I just wanted to bring that up because there is a little discrepancy of three feet.
In your favor.
In your favor.
As though the road were moved at some point in time? Is that what you're implying?
It's possible. I mean, as I said, those were old dirt roads at the time. But even in your packet, if you look at it closely, you can see that it's more on your side of the road. If you want to look at that, you can notice it.
Did she look at the blue?
And then when I blew it up here, if you want to come up and take a look at this, just to... This is when I went on the county maps. You can take a look at that and see that and then flip the page. So you can see what I measured. We're just trying to make sure we have the right setbacks we're talking about. Okay, so that's what that was all about. So, all right, now, the next thing, and this has to do with some information I added to this, which... Maybe I went a little bit overboard when I was looking at this stuff, looking in too deep. But I looked at the query package that was in your query map that was in your package. And it showed that the house had a square footage of 1,085 feet. So I'm not thinking, I'm not looking at anything else yet. So I know that anything under 1140 in our booklet is non-conforming. So I'm thinking, oh, we got a non-conforming house. Bear with me yet, don't...
I've said nothing. I've said nothing.
So I jotted down some notes and gave it to the board here, thinking that maybe it might have been a non-conforming. And you can only go a porch 10%, etc. But then, I went a little further after that and came up with the tax information. And there it showed that you had a first floor of 1872. And a full basement. And then there the enclosed masonry porch was 192. And that came up with that number that you had in the original packet. So the little notes that I have on here for the board is really a mute point. It's because I took it off of this, thinking that that was the square footage. I just want to make sure the board understands that. So there is no non-conforming as far as the structure goes anymore. So we're just back talking to the original setback information. And if everybody understand why I did that, I started looking at more documents and starting putting the pieces together. And this one, that was in a packet threw me off. Because I think it showed the original square footage. Before you probably added on.
Correct.
So that messed me up right there. And I didn't go further until after I made my little notes on the packet that I gave to the board. So that's a mute point now, because now I understand it all. And we're just going back to the original setback deal. That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
David, can I ask just a quick question, maybe not necessarily pertaining, well, I guess pertaining to this issue? So if prior to the enactment of the zoning restrictions, there is a house in place that does not meet the minimum setback requirements, does that render it a non-conforming structure?
And that would be to Tom Wilson, right? That you're asking the question of?
Well, the key thing is, it is non-conforming, but it's legal non-conforming. So, yeah, I mean, you can't do anything about it. It's a legal house. However, just like in this situation, if somebody comes in and wants to add a porch or a bedroom or something, they can only add up to 10% of that footprint. And that's for our code.
And the one provision that I came up with, because I think, you know, overall, just hearing the testimony and looking at the application, I don't have issue with the request. But just looking at things going forward, it appears that in that 10% request, if it were a non-conforming property, that it's not defined, floor area is not really defined in the whole code except for one place that says that we don't count porches for the purpose of calculating floor area. So I'm taking that to mean that even if we had a non-conforming structure and the request was for a porch, that's not the same as an addition because it's not counting toward floor area.
Well, that's a good question, because like when somebody comes in with plans for a new house, I count the footprint, which includes anything in a footprint that's...
Attached.
There's attached, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, and this says... Clarify, okay. I just wanted to further record, okay.
I don't know if you understand what this has to do with your request. I can tell by...
This was something that...
The reason, I think, because if it was considered by the board or the zoning inspector non-conforming, then you would only be able, you wouldn't be able to do this size porch. Right now, you're...
From the center line, we had 31.7 to that first stake. And then stake to stake at 25.1. And we didn't measure the house to the stake the first time, but the chairman, when she went out, she measured it to make sure, and that was eight feet. So that came out to be 64.8 feet. So we had a difference there of three feet between your measuring and our measuring. So that's something I just sort of noticed because the right-of-way is not 30, it's 33 feet on that side, based on the county maps. And I just wanted to bring that up because there is a little discrepancy of three feet. Now.
In your favor.
In your favor.
As though the road were moved at some point in time? Is that what you're implying?
It's possible.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, those were old dirt roads at the time.
Yep.
But even in your packet, if you look at it closely, you can see that it's more on your side of the road. You know, if you want to look at that, you can notice it.
Did you look at the blue?
And then when I blew it up here, if you want to come up and take a look at this, just to... This is when I went on the county maps. You can take a look at that and see that and then flip the page. So you can see what I measured. I'm just, we're just trying to make sure we have the right setbacks we're talking about. Okay? So that's what that was all about. So, all right. Now, the next thing, and this has to do with some information I added to this, which maybe I went a little bit overboard when I was looking at this stuff, looking in too deep. But I looked at the query package that was in your query map that was in your package. And it showed that the house had a square footage of 1,085 feet. So I'm not thinking, I'm not looking at anything else yet. So I know that anything under 1140 in our booklet is non-conforming. So I'm thinking, oh, we got a non-conforming house. Bear with me, Ed, don't.
I've said nothing, I've said nothing.
So I jotted down some notes and gave it to the board here, thinking that maybe it might have been a non-conforming and you can only go a porch 10%, etc. But then, I went a little further after that and came up with the tax information. And there it showed that you had a first floor of 1872 and a full basement. And then there the enclosed masonry porch was 192. And that came up with that number that you had in the original packet. So the little notes that I have on here for the board is really a mute point. It's because I took it off of this, thinking that that was the square footage. I just want to make sure the board understands that. So there is no non-conforming as far as the structure goes anymore. So we're just back talking to the original setback information. And if everybody understand why I did that. I just, I started looking at more documents and starting putting the pieces together. And this one that was in the packet threw me off. Because I think it showed the original square footage.
Yes.
Where you probably added on.
Correct.
So that messed me up right there. And I didn't go further until after I made my little notes on the packet that I gave to the board. So that's, it's a mute point now. Because now I understand it all and we're just going back to the original setback deal. That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
David, can I ask just a quick question, maybe not necessarily pertaining, well, I guess pertaining to this issue? So if prior to the enactment of the zoning restrictions, there is a house in place that does not meet the minimum setback requirements, does that render it a non-conforming structure?
And that would be to Tom Wilson, right?
Yeah.
That you're asking the question of?
Well, the key thing is, it is non-conforming, but it's legal non-conforming.
Okay.
So, yeah. I mean, you can't do anything about it, it's a legal house. However, just like in this situation, if somebody comes in wants to add a porch or a bedroom or something, they can only add up to 10% of that footprint. And that's for our code.
And the one provision that I came up with, because I think, you know, overall, just hearing the testimony and looking at the application, I don't have issue with the request. But just looking to things going forward, it appears that in that 10% request, if it were a non-conforming property, that it's not defined, floor area is not really defined in the whole code except for one place that says that we don't count porches for the purpose of calculating floor area. So I'm taking that to mean that even if we had a non-conforming structure and the request was for a porch, that's not the same as an addition because it's not counting toward floor area.
Well, that's a good question because like when somebody comes in with plans for a new house, I count the footprint, which includes porches. Includes anything in a footprint that's.
Attached.
That's attached, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, and this says. Clarify, okay, I just wanted to further record, okay.
I don't know if you understand what this has to do with your request. I can tell by.
This was something that.
The reason I think this, because if it was considered by the board or the zoning inspector non-conforming, then you would only be able, you wouldn't be able to do this size porch. Right now, your request, your variance request is for the front yard setback. However, if it was considered non-conforming, you would have to have another variance in addition to this. So we, zoning inspector has decided it's not, it is conforming. It is non-conforming, okay, it is conforming. And so does the board agree, therefore, this is just kind of a discussion, a side discussion as to.
This was sort of information to the board because to the information on the setbacks, I made some notes about the, what I originally thought was a non-conforming based on what was in the packet. And so since it's on here, I had to make an explanation to the board why that really, once I looked into it further and went into the tax maps and everything else, find out what was really there. So this part here probably shouldn't have been in the packet, but that's.
So as far as the variance request, the only difference between what is being requested in the packet and what the board measured is what, three point?
Three feet, basically.
Yeah, three feet. Which is less of a variance than you're asking for, which. So anybody else have anything else on this?
Very welcome.
Okay. Do you have any comments for us or anything else?
Hopefully I didn't confuse you. But it had to be something I had to clear up with the board.
I'm not confused. This is a learning experience for me, so just taking it all in. Are you done with me up here then?
So the bottom line is you measured it and we measured it. Somehow between the two of us, we were three feet off.
All I can say is the architect was using the brain's end of the tape.
Then I'll take our, I'll take our measurement then.
Okay, is there anyone? Thank you, you can take a seat. Is there anyone else with any comments on anything? Tom, do you have anything to contribute?
I'm glad we had this discussion because it's something, as I say, we maybe need to make sure our code is saying the same thing in two different places. Would you write that down for me?
Yeah, and I can bring that to Marcus too.
Okay. All right. Well, actually, there is a question that we're supposed to ask, which will come up in the dumping factors. Were you aware as a resident of the township that of the zoning restrictions when you purchased the property in 1970, what was it, 1976? Yeah. You can just answer from there, you don't have to do that. Okay, so the answer is no. All right, so at this point, maybe we should do the dumping factors. All right, ready? You ready, Jimmy?
I'm ready.
All right, well, the property yield, a reasonable return or could there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Rubel? Hess? Shaffer?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes. Is the variance substantial?
Shaffer?
No.
Zalesny?
Uh, no.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
I say yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right. Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered or will adjoining properties suffer substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
Zalesny?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Right, will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Zalesny?
No.
All right, did the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Collabro?
No, as testified.
Rubel?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Zalesny?
No.
Who?
No.
Can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance?
Rubel?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Zalesny?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No. Does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Shaffer?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Uh, yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right. Any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Peace of Medina County on the grounds that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful. At this point.
Well, I got a question on this because we have the new submission of the smaller size. So what are we going to use for a setback on this then? Because it's really not a, the setback on the original is not what we're looking at right now.
Well, I think we should use, I think you stated that we trusted our measurements, which would be to his favor, so we should use that measurement.
Okay.
So the setback would be what? So you measured what, 23 and?
23, three and three quarters.
So what's that from 75, whatever, is that what you have, Jeff?
I didn't have numbers yet, that's what I'm waiting on.
Okay. So what are we doing, 75? So Tom, what was it originally, do you know?
I think originally it's 31. The new set, excuse me, is. You had a 31.7.
Yeah, right.
So if you had three, that'd be 34.7.
So it would actually be 35 because it's 23.3. And if it was 31.7?
Well, we'd be deducting three actually. Just three, just three feet in.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So what is that?
So that's 20.
28. Yeah, 28.7 was the original.
Right.
28.4.
Oh, setback of 24. With, and what's the variance for that?
Reading.
The proposed, 75 minus 28.4, right?
46.6.
46.6? All right.
So can you?
Yeah.
To a formal resolution.
I submitted a resolution for AP 0271, submitted by Brian Cadham, owner of 1085 State Road, Hinkley, Ohio, 44233. Permanent parcel number 01603B35016. Requesting to construct a porch at the set address in a location that does not meet the front yard setback of 75 feet from the road right-of-way. Chapter 6, 6R1 dot 4 dot K dot 1C of the Hinkley zoning regulations. So zoning reference is 75 foot, the proposed setback is 28.4 with a variance of 46.6.
No, setback is 23. Actually, in 23 and three and three quarters, if you want to get really technical, based on our measurements.
So is it 51.7? 23.3 from 75, Dave?
I don't have my.
No, but I'm saying that's.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
So the proposed setback is 23.
So the 31.7 that was just used before, that's the right-of-way to the house.
Okay.
Figure. So the setback is 23.3. So just to be certain, 75, 75 from, I mean, 23.3 from 75 is. 51.7.
Okay. So the zoning reference is 75 feet, the proposed setback is 23.3 with a variance of 51.7 feet.
Do we want to add in there that this is based on the edge of the right-of-way being 33 feet from center line?
I don't think it's necessary.
Well, the thing is, we don't really control that if they come out and redo the road and re-stripe it. I mean.
It could be awful a little bit.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Well, I just wondering why, you know, based on their original measurements versus that, if there was a question down the line. I don't think there will be, but.
Yeah, Tom, the right-of-way isn't changing. You're talking about the center line strip.
That's what I'm saying.
But we're measuring from the right-of-way, not the center line.
You're not really, Bill. You're measuring from, you're guessing that the center line is 30 feet this way and 30 feet this way.
Well, that's why Dave went through all this. And that's how we found out that it was, that the center line is not in the center of the right-of-way.
Okay, let's move on. So you've got 51.7?
Yes.
I'll give a second.
Do I have a second?
Right here, second.
Okay, that's Bill. All right. Before we take the vote, a yes simple majority with a forum president is in favor of the applicant. A no simple majority or a tie vote would deny the applicant's request. And at this point, who are you to take the vote?
Let's do it. Collabro?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right, so. Your variance has been granted. The applicant has one year from the date of this hearing. Tom, we're not done. Not time to celebrate yet. The applicant has one year from the date of the hearing to begin construction or to act on the approved request. Anyone that's adversely affected by this decision has 30 days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are approved to file suit for an appeal. Meeting minutes are typically approved at the next regular meeting. Upon approval of this, the hearing minutes, such minutes will be posted and available on the township website. So at this point, if you can hang on, we'll get the form signed, signature.
Going to make it?
I have to make out a new document. And I, this is new information. And I'll get that done in a bit.
Time to make a motion to.
Oh, good?
Good.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
All right, so we are adjourned at 7:35. 1:25, 23. You're welcome, thank you.